We can blame the rest, right?
Are you ready? Yeah, we're gonna start it. Okay, the time is now one o'clock. I'll call our regular commissioner meeting for May 19th to order, and we'll start today with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda today is Julie Jensen Kelly is here for a request for corporate challenge.
Good afternoon. I am here for a request in your permission, but also your financial support in us participating again in the corporate challenge with the YMCA. I did have them send an invoice in case it was approved today, because that's something I think that the auditor's office needs. So this is something we've participated in for several, several years with the Y. It gives us an opportunity to spend time together after work, also meeting folks from other companies in Willy County. So just asking for your permission and your approval today.
And we have a trophy up there from last year?
Uh, from last year. I think there's a couple of years ago. We have either the, we'll call it the Participation Award. The Good Attitude Award, I think, is up there, along with probably winning the whole thing one year, so.
Very good.
I move to approve this request as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anything further? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same. And that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Have fun. When does it start?
Well, it starts in July, but I'll have Kami or Jensen out a notice of all, everyone in the county. So commissioners are able to participate if they choose to.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So the second item, the item on the agenda was an update from Economic Development Corporation, but we heard from Dale earlier. He's out ill. And so we'll move on then to James Johnson from Willy County Council on Aging for the 2026 NDOT application.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Just to give a little bit of a review on this, our organization has come to you over the years for this application. NDOT requires us to report on a monthly basis, our expenses, things that go on on a regular basis, because of, the majority of our funding comes through them. And then, once a year, we apply for the following year's application. So that, in the middle of that, which makes it actually 90 days in the job. We need the first quarterly report and first annual report. So, you know, part of this, part of this process, you know, we've had to create our 2026 budget. Part of that is allocating costs between our direct expenses, which we have to prove to NDOT on that, and the quarterly work that backs those up. We do cost allocation, our nutrition, the meal programs, that we do, our activities, and then indirect reporting, which is salaries and expenses that are not directly affiliated with NDOT. We also, through this application, request new vehicles. We have 12 vehicles in our fleet. And NDOT says, once a vehicle has hit 100,000 miles and at least four years old, you can request new vehicles. We run ours almost into the ground. We do about 200,000 miles on our vehicles. And so we're in the process of doing that. We've got two vehicles that you all approved last year. And then we're gonna be doing that again for 2026. And then, as you know, you are the pass-through organization that the state has set up. So there's lots of documents that have to be done. So I've got, I sent out several documents, and I don't know if you want me to go through each of these or how we wanna do that, but I can, I can explain as we go, or how do you, this is my first rodeo of this.
Well, you and I talked last week, and I had several questions about some of those, because there were, what was sent to me was kind of like the one paragraph about the warranties. And I wasn't, at the time, we weren't sure who was even supposed to sign those.
Well, there was one that you questioned about, our auditor's not gonna sign it.
There's a resolution that had the auditor signing, yeah.
And they said that Chad could sign that.
Okay.
But the warranties are basically just, well, specifically, it's easy for me. There's, there was a pass-through, a fairly lengthy document. I only, I don't know if I provided you. Well, I think I provided you the entire documentation on that. There's the pass-through agreement, basically stating, as you have for years, that the money is, and things flow through within apples, through, through our county commissioner office and to us. There was a, there was a resolution about that same grant that says the recording office, you know, the auditor's recorder, and they said that's what Chad could sign. There was then certifications and capital assurances really for our vehicles. For everything, this, excuse me, back up. The local financial certifications, capital use assurances, talks about the vehicles are gonna be used for, they're gonna be used for intended purposes, and that the Willy County Council on Aging can fulfill its mission responsibilities. We're basically stating that we're here before you say what we will be doing and have been.
And the Council on Aging is the one who signs all these?
No, these, these are the, the authorized officials would be the commissioner's office.
Because I haven't seen those, the text of those.
I, well, I sent, I sent the set of documents.
Right, but all those representations were just like, there was just one paragraph, and something was highlighted. I didn't see the actual documents themselves.
I thought I had sent the entire document. So I can get those to you.
Okay.
There was another certification, use of project equipment facilities. Again, it's about vehicles. We have to also go through a disposition of those, saying, here's the two vehicles we have. We either can sell them outright. Most of the time, they go to scrap, because they're not really worth much. By then, we're finished. There was a very lengthy one on, it was the labor warranty arrangement. That's just stating, we don't have, we don't work for the labor union. Our drivers are not unionized. That's listed as, as not applicable. And then it wants to know, you know, where do we operate? We operate primarily Willy County, although we do take veterans to Fort Wayne or to Marion for the VA. We take dialysis patients to Fort Wayne, Huntington, and Warsaw, because we don't have a dialysis. But most of our work is here. There was also, just, I'm just going through these just as a matter of review. There was another that says, you know, we can apply for, we may not get them, and some, some may or may not apply to us, but we go ahead, we are told by the state to check it all off. So there's, there's grants and things that we could go after for funding. And that's the FTA, the federal fiscal year. I asked them about, says 2024. They said, use it anyway, because it hasn't changed. I don't care for that. But there's a classical, or category exclusion on the capital projects, basically saying, when we purchase vehicles, they're going to be used as replacements. Says, or increase the size. We are not increasing the size of our fleet. We've got 12 vehicles on fleet, and we're replacing two that have gone off. They happen to be minibus, and we're going to be going back to minibus. 2026, we're getting rid of two, I think, two, a minibus and a minivan, and we're gonna place it with two vans. Everything, again, if you don't know, and for the public, all of our vehicles have to be handicap accessible, so we either have lifts on the minibus or ramps. But I can provide the full documentation. I thought that came through. I don't know. Because the files that I sent came through the whole, I thought I had the entire documents.
I think this is what we could do. And Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The, the documents are very familiar to me. So I think if we, if we could just approve this contingent upon your review.
Yeah, because I know he needs this soon, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I can look at everything tomorrow. If you can send it all to me.
I will.
You could pass the resolution.
I apologize. I thought, I thought the entire.
There was just like a cover page for each of the warranties.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there will be a resolution? And if you could provide the resolution number, that'd be great.
If you just wanna cross out where it says auditor and put your name in as president?
And I've talked to Todd Jennings. He's our main guy down there.
Yeah.
Is that recording officer?
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how many, how many of these documents look different this year. I've been told they change.
This is all I got, was this page for each one. I didn't get the underlying stuff.
I'll send, I'll send.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I know one of the documents is 72 pages long.
So do you just wanna give us a, a title of each, each one that you want, that you need passed today? And in our motion, we'll make these approved contingent. Andy's review. So the first one that I have in my list is the categorical exclusion classification of capital projects checklist. Is that something that, I don't see a place for signature? That's not something that we would approve, right? So we would probably go right on then to the.
Is it this one?
Yeah. Yep.
There's a place at the very, very bottom.
I see. Okay.
And that's just, again, that's just stating that our vehicles are gonna be used for their intended purposes. We are actually replacing our vehicles, not increasing our fleet.
Yep, okay. So I think that's probably, we're gonna do these one by one, so.
I would move to approve the categorical exclusion classification of capital projects checklist.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same. And I can sign my copies, right?
Yep.
Okay, what's next? What do you have next for us?
I would say the big one, it's the signature page. It's the pass-through. It's called the pass-through agreement. And it says, the signature page says that the steps is successors assigned severability. And then there's a section that I'll end up signing after I see. This is just, again, you're saying you will be, you're the pass-through organization that the state requires for us to operate.
I would move to pass the document as presented.
The pass-through document?
Yes.
And that would be contingent upon legal review?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same, and that passes. Then we have the certification of use of project equipment and facilities.
Yes, and again, that sounds, that sounds somewhat redundant, that they're requiring a signed document saying that, again, our, our vehicles are gonna be used for the transit, transit agency. We adhere to that very strictly. And again, we're, we're getting new vehicles, and we're gonna be getting rid of those vehicles. I'm getting lots of emails from different counties that have rural transit organizations, saying, Jay County has two vehicles for sale. Somebody's interested. So we go through a disposition process on that. So again, it's just saying that these are the vehicles we're using, where they're strictly used for transit purposes and for, for nothing else.
I would move to approve the certification of use of project equipment and facilities. Contention on legal review?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that's approved. What do you have next, Jim?
Well, I've got, there's one that, again, this is just the signature page, but this is the, basically authorizing us to apply for 2026 application. It's a, it says resolution number at the top. This is where it says, before you, officer. I don't know if he's done that already.
Yep, yep. So we'll approve this one contingent as well?
I have another one, and also, it's confusing, because it sounds like a previous one. The local financial certifications and capital use assurances. Again, that we're using our facilities and our vehicles for their intended purposes. In other words, you know, a church group can't come to say, hey, could we use your bus and take a, can't you? We're not allowed to do that. And we're only allowed to operate during certain hours.
Yep. Okay, I would entertain a motion for Resolution 2025 dash zero two.
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I just wanna clarify, that's contingent legal review.
Yes.
I'll call for that vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same. That's. And then we will jump into the local financial certification capitals. I'd entertain a motion.
Submove upon legal review.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for that vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that is approved. And last, we have the labor warranty.
Yes, and that's just stating, there's lots of documentation here of working with labor unions. We don't, our drivers are not under a legal union at all.
Yep.
If I don't, it does not apply. But we had to identify where do we do our business, and that's within the county.
Yep. So last, last approval, this needed is for the labor warranty. And again, that will be pending legal review.
Submove.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same, and that passes. So what I'm going to do, Jim, is after Andy gives me the go-ahead, Kami will provide me the documents. I'll get them signed, and we'll bring them back to you.
Great. Appreciate it. And I thank you for your patience in this. Again, it'll be different next year. You won't see this many documents until next year.
Right. Yeah, it's always surprising, but, but we know it's coming, so. Yep.
And we appreciate your support, because we, we believe we do great things. And again, for anybody in the public, if they wanna come by and take a look at what we do, and even if you wanna review our financials, we're very open to that. We have, we have great treasure from our board, former CPA, former college professor, that's a fantastic child. And we just had our honor report done today by Colton Associates. Said we were very clean on it, so.
Very good. Very good. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda today is Scott Wagner from the Health Department about our sewer ordinance.
Okay. We'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay, so we will table that item. And move on to Nathan Bilger from Planning and Building.
Good afternoon. Have one plat for your consideration today. This is a one-lot plat located on Sheldon Road to be called Classic Acres. It is immediately south of Poly Acres, which was approved last year. Also a one-lot plant. The Plan Commission did consider this one a bit more closely than most. There are some drainage issues that exist on this property. And Health Department had some concerns about water interference for septic systems. So those were conditions of their approval. Those have been sorted out between the Health Department and Engineering now. So, and there's an agreed-upon set of items to be done. So with that, this comes to you with an otherwise, otherwise has approval. So, any questions for me?
I move to approve Classic Acres as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll leave this here for your signatures after.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda today is Brad Allen, our county engineer, with a bridge inspection program agreement.
So the, there was a few changes to the contract?
Yeah, but we, they can approve it. I've worked with this company before.
With USI?
Yeah, in a different county, in the same exact agreement that, you know, the department language we have to have, and a couple of other changes, and they accepted them before. So they can pass it with my changes, and it, I'm assuming USI will accept it, because they've accepted those same changes before.
Okay, the person I talked to must not have been aware of that.
Okay.
They wanted to run by them, so I, I don't know if we.
I think it's okay for them to go ahead and prove it. I, I'm pretty confident they'll take it, because it's the exact same agreement we did in Huntington County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you guys had a chance to review that bridge agreement with USI?
I move to approve the agreement, the bridge inspection agreement with USI as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes unanimously. And I'll just get a signature paper today. Next up, Ryan Gutz, Community Crossings, matching grant bid acceptance.
Good afternoon. There's one document to, I saw that on email, three signatures. That's the bid acceptance for Fenton Brown, who did our community crossings last year. They were considerably less expensive than the other two that placed bids this year. And that document, we, I've got it marked. And there's another one, if we can have Chairman Banks sign it. It's the, the document needs to go back to the state as far as the bid acceptance. I guess those two documents.
Fenton Brown did our project, Lincoln, Lincoln Way West. They did a, a great job, and I'm pleased to see them, their bid come in considerably lower for the Lincoln Way East project. I have no issue. I have full confidence in their ability and, and pleased with their price.
I would move that we accept a Community Crossings matching grant.
Of Fenton Brown?
Of Fenton Brown.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that's unanimous.
I believe I heard today that the Community Crossing, I think this was right, the Community Crossings program was, used to be 300 million, and now it's gone down to 100 million. Is that right?
For most counties, a lot of that funding is being probably in Indianapolis, Marion County. So I expect this to be our last year of having a 1.5 available.
They also canceled the second round this year. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ryan, just for clarification, is it right here, the contracting authority members?
Yes.
That's where we're signing?
Great, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we did receive some facilities requests. Okay, we did receive some facilities requests. So we'll start, the one that I have first is one that we've reviewed previously from Whitley County Pride. And this is for the courthouse. It says square, but I believe they're using Chauncey Street, the sidewalk and lawn, along with the street that the city has approved. But as a reminder, we do have the policy in place that we, that we won't approve them until they're 90 days old. So we need that three, that three month. And I know that recently, we approved an event that was an ongoing event, multiple, it was a multi-month event, First Fridays, and we approved that because it was a multiple date.
Same event.
Same event that had been vetted, and, and we felt comfortable approving. So in this case, with this one, I feel that since, you know, technically, I mean, per our policy, we wouldn't approve this for another month. I believe we should table it. So I would entertain a motion to table.
Submoved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same, and that's unanimous. So this one will come back next month. The second is from a Beth Turner at the Elks Lodge, 1415. They're expecting about 15 participants for a Flag Day ceremony, and it would be outside the north side of the courthouse, so near the main entrance. And this is on June 14th, from 10 to 12. Any questions? Maintenance, security, and EMA have reviewed and given their okay.
I would move to accept the request as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same, and that passes unanimously. The next is from Vivian McSade from the Whitley County Democrat Party. And they are requesting the use of the courthouse outside, so on the square from one to three, an hour after the farmer's market has disassembled. And the date would be on May 17th, which has already happened. And if not too late, or if it is too late for that request, then they would request the 31st, which I assume they accepted the 31st.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to approve this request as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same, and that carries unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is payroll and accounts payable claims approval.
I was able to go Friday afternoon, look things over, look to be all in order, so I'll move to approve payroll.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same. And that carries unanimously. That's tabled.
Are there any other claims, Teresa?
There were a few other claims, and there was nothing that raised any questions.
I move to approve claims.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve claims. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And that carries unanimously. Are there two, are there two sets of meeting minutes? We have a special meeting, right? So.
I only have one set.
I have one set for the regular meeting May 5th.
I apologize, I have both sets.
Okay, so we'll start with the May 5th regular meeting.
Everything looks accurate to the best of my recollection, so I'll approve to, move to approve the minutes from the May 5th, 2025 Commissioners' Meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same. And I abstain. And then the second set of meetings is from Commissioner Council Joint Meeting held on May 13th. Has everyone had a chance to review the special meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the, what was the date? I'm sorry, last due date?
It was May 13th.
The May 13th joint meeting between the council and Commissioners as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that carries unanimously. Everything looked good, signed, get everything back?
Yep.
I didn't slip anything in?
That's what I saw.
Okay. We've come to that time where we will open up to public comment today. So I know there's a lot of people here who would like to speak primarily about that special meeting that we just approved the minutes for, where there was discussion about moving Purdue Extension and using the building that they're in for a future site for probation. So we're going to open up public comment for, for, to be respectful for everyone's time, we'll offer, or we will allow for three minutes per person. And if you're speaking on behalf of an entire group, like if Todd wanted to speak on behalf of Purdue Extension, and John and Brittany aren't speaking, then we'll allow for five minutes. Does that make sense? So again, public comment is open, and if anyone would like to come forward and speak, now would be the time to do so. And just as a reminder, if you could just introduce yourself for the minutes, we all know who you are, John, but.
John LeBanci, Purdue Extension educator, Accredent for Resources. Just very briefly, I, I understand the financial constraints and pressures you've got. I just wish we could find a solution that doesn't disturb two offices in just one office. I don't know if it's been explored. I, maybe we can possibly let this office almost take over ours down to the basement instead of us. I know there's some current concerns there about public perception, but we're paying a high price ourselves for that decision. So I don't know if there's any other, like the work release hotel, is there a possibility there? So I would just ask that you consider that. The other thing I would ask is, we're in a real critical time leading up to the fair, and I would just ask that you'd consider our time and all the logistics that we've got to take care of between now and then, if a move is ever, so, anyway. I respect the decision you have to make. I just was hoping that there would be a solution that didn't involve maybe two offices, just.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment, please? Last call, public comment.
Good afternoon. I'm Todd Geiger from Purdue Extension, Whitley County Office. Just appreciate all that you all do for our county and obviously decisions that need to be made. Just concerns as an apartment head, as I chaired before, I'm trying to put it as blunt as what I could when it comes to looking at space where we're currently at on Branch Court and in the basement here in the government center. Do we give up programs? Do we give up people? That's really where we're at when it comes to moving into a space that's 40% of the size where we're currently at. And with that, as John already stated, looking at the timeline and the season that we're currently in, just looking at that, what, what's available in terms of that is the location, is moving to the basement in terms of office remodel, adjustment down the stairs, what's that mean in terms of office furniture? Because our current setup, we actually have staff members that don't have a desk because of where they're situated. There's camera amps, things like that. So they currently don't have any office furniture other than the countertop space that's available there. Building access is a concern for my specific programming area, especially as we jump into the summer. I shared a little bit of that with Mark Sturven, trying to get a better feel for that. There's lots of evenings, and then as we roll into really close to the fair, our staff will literally be in and out of the building after midnight as we're doing things for the fair, getting prepped for the next day. It's just the way, the nature of peace. And in, as John stated, that timeline, as we're getting ready for fair season, on my end, we're programming that I do, not only with schools and the Center for Whitley County Youth, things like that, we kind of shut that down. Here's what we get done at the end of the school year before we jump into full-on prep for the fair. Looking at the space that's available here, that concerns me. I don't know where we can prep. I know there is meeting rooms across the hallway, but we can't really load that thing up with stuff prepping for fair because once we're prepped, I don't know where we put it. So I just appreciate your thoughts on that. Looking at other options in terms of where we store stuff, I know it was mentioned from a council member that maybe there was an idea there. That person wanted to come through and see our office. We haven't heard anything yet, and that's a major concern of hers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Andy, is there anything you'd like to add for today's meeting for the vote or?
Nothing more.
Tamela, anything to add? Commissioner Shuman?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Basinger?
Nothing.
And I have nothing to add. So at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming.